You're better, Bill.
Um, yeah, I'm still, I'm still croaky as you as well. But I mean, I've lost my voice, you see, before I had Covid.
Yeah.
Uh, fought that before. Um, so, um, and, you know.
So you're right, but she all right, did she have any?
She has as well.
She had it, like, yeah.
Oh, yeah, 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 with, you know, genuine partnership.
Yeah.
But, uh, yeah, I mean, um, yeah, everyone comes back from holiday with souvenirs, don't they?
That's it, yeah, they do.
Just chosen a better one. Oh, no, I think my brother's got Covid.
Oh, there's so much good around, isn't there?
He, but he, he never tests, so he's still been going into work and, uh, and so forth, and, um, uh, he went up to the Stadium of Light because his son was for Saturday, so he infected.
Hi there, how's it?
Welcome aboard, boy.
Indeed, first one. But, yeah, he went to Stadium of Light, you're saying, yeah?
Yes, yes, well, not me, my brother.
No, no, he did, yeah.
Yeah, so he's definitely holding.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm glad to tell you.
The units for the show in the market are in pens, eh? The units for the show in the market are in pens, eh? And you're fine.
I haven't been home till next week.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, I'm going to be in, but you're going to be in anyway. But you're going to be in, but you're going to be in anyway. Evening, everyone, welcome, welcome, welcome.
By the time we go, we'll come back again. By the time we go, we'll come back again.
Very special welcome to, to our new councillor.
Yeah, I'm here, yeah, I'm here, darling. Yeah, I'm here, yeah, I'm here, darling.
Thank you.
Uh, welcome, you're welcome to, uh,
Standing this. Standing this.
I've seen my niece. I've seen my niece.
Um. Um.
come in and join and, and see where the heartbeats of this council are at.
McDonald's, yeah. McDonald's, yeah.
They, they, they. They, they, they.
You'll have a choice. You'll have a choice.
Yeah.
Where the, where the, there's the screen that puts down people being on the ground. Where the, where the, there's the screen that puts down people being on the ground.
Or, well, sometimes it's not in here, but.
My niece, she's older than me. My niece, she's older than me.
Now, to receive and resolve, uh, if there's our declarations of interest.
Uh, safety blocks. Uh, safety blocks.
Is she? Is she?
So what's all over? So what's all over?
My niece has a nephew older than me. My niece has a nephew older than me.
Uh, yes, if I may, um, And by, by chance, and it was just by chance. And by, by chance, and it was just by chance. uh, item seventeen point eight.
It blends, uh, yeah, yeah, yeah. It blends, uh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Um, because I'm a member of the Committee of Gillsborough Singers, I must associate myself with the letter in support written by,
He's a baby, kind of baby, yeah. He's a baby, kind of baby, yeah.
Highways, and they, uh, they, they don't, they're clear. And highways, and they, uh, they, they don't, they're clear.
Well, we all were. Well, we all were.
Um, I said, hold on, so this, you know, every time you say, I'm a great name, well, I said, yes, you're included. Um, I said, hold on, so this, you know, every time you say, I'm a great name, well, I said, yes, you're included. uh, um, uh, Chair, and so if I, I will participate in discussion as well.
Thank you, Bill. Apologies for us, this is good.
We received apologies from councillor Cal Robinson.
Right. Evening, Alan.
Evening.
Where have we been till now? Public participation to receive members of the public who wish to address, and address the meeting in respect of any item of business included in the agenda. No resolutions can be made under this item and should relate only to matters of council policy or practice, and not individual affairs or the questionnaire or any other name per.
Can I just say that we, we really do need to correct that from order of to be, uh, individual affairs of the questionnaire.
Yeah.
Every, every time I think I, I, I need to, I need to say we should correct that, so.
Oh, thank you, Bill.
Yeah. Uh, previous minutes then. All good minutes? To prove and stand in correct record, uh, uh, the minutes from meeting, the events planning committee. I'm going to do something.
First, that all, yes.
You're right. Thank you, page one. Just jump in or shout or do something if you want to my attention. Page two.
I just asked on page two, Chair, did we get anywhere with that application? Have we got any response on that at all? Which, I think, you know, that one, it was quite controversial for quarry. We have.
Oh, no, not received anything, no.
Really?
Apart from them saying that it was just at the stage of consultation as opposed to an actual application.
Right, okay, so nothing.
But nothing from the visitor we had.
No, okay, no, that's great, continued.
All right, sir?
Yeah.
Yeah. And the last page. Everyone okay with him? Uh, sir?
Going to accept, Chair.
Second, please. Thank you, in favour. Thank you.
What are you, um, winter festival making?
Not surprising.
We're going to go over, head with the secret.
Sorry?
And exceed your events minute, or just do them together.
Yeah. Yeah, you're supposed to have done them together, but I doesn't want them, go on, say no.
We've won. Massive.
That, that was okay, yeah.
See, yes.
We need to review. That's it. Page one?
Uh, page one? The, sorry, we're only other minutes now. Page one, page two. Three. And four. Is that it? Everyone okay with that? Have a proposal, please? Anybody, thank you, Bill. That felt secondary.
Second.
In favour?
I'm allowed to vote, uh, I am, no.
No, no, no.
Sorry, I'm abstaining, Chair, because I wasn't at a minute.
Yeah, okay, I'm saying you do, sir.
Saying, yeah.
Yeah.
I'm abstaining too.
Okay, that is my call.
I'm listening, thank you.
Thank you, all.
How, how have you? We've seen these minutes, we've read these. So if you're abstaining, and you went attendance. You were here.
In the second.
Yeah, this, this was the first, we, 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 we took the reverse order.
That was Julie, me and Phil. You seconded in reverse order, didn't you?
Yeah, so. They put them in the reverse order, not in the date order, I was at the first meeting, but not for the second meeting.
Okay, so.
So the second meeting, we just went to, the, the first meeting, we just went to, okay. In case you don't.
No, but if, what's the date of these minutes? Because I come back from one, but I wasn't.
Second of July, second of July.
Yeah. That one's done, yeah, and I'll vote for it.
Thank you, all right, thank you. Okay, we, we sorted through that. It's arising. Report for information purposes only matters arising from the events and planning committee on the second of the seventh, twenty twenty five, and on thirteenth of eighth, twenty twenty five.
Let's fix on the agenda, yeah. It's all resolved on eight, isn't it?
Okay.
Hello, Nick, evening, Nick. Yeah, sorry, Chair, I struggled to get in, but I'm in now. I was watching on YouTube, but I'm in now. Okay, we'll, we'll have a report from the tourist information centre, please.
Evening all, can you hear me?
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, we didn't have one in July, I'll give July people coming in. Local people was eight hundred and seventy. UK was one thousand and eleven. And overseas was ninety three. Which was very good. August, local people, seven hundred and twenty two. UK was nine hundred and thirty. And overseas was seventy two. We've been very busy in the last two months. And, as you know, the bus timetable have all changed now. We're getting through them. Getting to know a bit more about them, but we're still waiting for a few to come out yet. The town bus service hasn't, uh, gentlemen that done it, it's gone on holiday. No, nothing to do with gentlemen, all right? Just, just, let a woman do it, and that's it. Yeah, no, I think it's going good. We sold twenty three handbags in August. I did have an order in August, I bought twenty three bags in and I sold twenty three out. So, hope for later, we're going out till Christmas. Thank you very much.
Where are we, tickets going to go?
Oh, so, yeah, they are, yeah, they are, so, yes.
That's really good.
Yeah, we have a lot of people coming from Newtown. Yeah, coming down from Newtown, parents.
Well done.
And, that's a brilliant service, that is. You know, but. And over the weekend, a, a lady rang up from Lincoln. And she was in a bit of trouble. She hadn't, um, her mum and dad had died, but she used to come in to the office quite often, you know, we got to know them well for the years, you know, ended, and, um, she couldn't get an order of service off. So we managed to print something off, or just on a sheet of paper, she just wanted twelve. So she did that, and then she brought the flowers in, and they're in the TIC, she was ever so grateful.
Oh, that's.
She was, yeah, so we don't just tell, we, yeah, go out and beyond to help people, even if we don't know, you know, but it's good.
Go with the community, that's it, yes, so, yeah.
Well, that's the case at the moment, particularly with the bus timetable, isn't it? I mean, everybody's coming in to ask.
Yeah, they're coming from London, K S U's from bus timetables, it's, it's good fun, we can help them, you know.
Okay.
Thank you, and.
Anybody questions? Thank you, Ed. Uh, committee finance, month four and five, to know the current spending position against the budget for the committee for July twenty twenty five, month four, and August twenty twenty five, month five. We all studied them? I know Morag, she loves it, I guess she does.
Yeah, I have studied them.
Yeah.
But just, just one thing to observe is that we're now coming up to the, uh, costliest time of year with the events that we put on. Uh, the Christmas events and Halloween, so. So I've said this before, even if it says we're under budget now, that may not be depicted by the end of the year. Um, and we have tied out a couple of, one of some of the unseen costs that we have may not have budgeted for because we, we didn't know about them, but they are annual costs, so we're trying to pick as many of those out ready for next year so that we can budget for some of the underlying costs of some of those events that are standard, that happen every time we do it, uh, which haven't been picked up in this year's budget.
Are they unforeseen costs then, something unforeseen costs?
Well, they're not, they were foreseen costs, but that, they, they weren't pointed out at the time we set the budget.
Right.
Um, so in future, what we hope to be able to do is to bring all the costs of an event together. Uh, so as we look at it as a whole, right.
It makes it easier for the layman to, to understand it, doesn't it?
Just the additional costs in the, you know, booking acts or everything extraordinary like that.
Thank you, Morag, Bill?
Yeah, are we anticipating any further, uh, costs on Christmas lights? Because I see that we're already over the budgeted amount.
Apart from the yearly having to erect them and take them back down, no, I'm storing, but other than them costs, no. Not that we foresee.
So what, what, what would that, what would that be additional to what's already there, or is, is that something that? Absolutely.
So, Chair, can I, I've had a conversation with the town plan, um, that is one of the instances where the budget was reduced because we didn't need any new lights, but it still doesn't cover the cost of putting them up and taking them down.
And all storage.
All the additional safety checks because health and safety has increased.
Yeah.
On these things, on testing the anchor points, and, and making sure that all are electric, safe for the food for the mouthful.
So, so, so what you're saying basically is that, 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 that's an amount that needs to be larger, potentially.
Yeah, we may be all big budget on their, the lights budget.
Yeah, that's, uh, the, the figure quoted is, is nowhere near, uh, if we don't.
Um, can I just ask you, Morag, if we could, if we could maybe put the budget up slightly for the carnival and the community events? Only because, as we know from last year, very, very kindly from building donated, but these acts are costing a lot. And I think for us to put on a better show, could we look at the budget for next year and maybe up it?
Also, well, certainly next year we can look at that as part of the strategic plan.
Because, because if you look on these services here, the carnival is actually quite low. And I think we perhaps need to look at that next year.
Yeah, we need to better discover, yeah, because acts are.
Be towards the end of this year, chairs will get together and set the budget for the preset. Because I don't think that's enough for.
And with some of those events, so for example, with the winter festival, we're going to be meeting very shortly.
Yeah.
To start looking at that and making sure we have got all the costs listed.
Because.
Not just the ones we knew about, but the underlying ones that, um.
And also the important events, yeah, so they need to be good.
The things like the carnival and the Christmas lights, you may well need to buy a money from the special project budget to cover that.
Absolutely, um, but that was, that I knew I'd have very quickly, because I think it needs to have more money, so. Thank you. Sorry, Bill.
Then I'll come to you, Bill. Thanks, Bill. Yes, and, and we, we shouldn't forget that if we made some of these events pay, uh, that would help to offset the costs. Um, I think we don't explore enough opportunities to make money at these events, not by charging people for attending the carnival or something like that, but we could have other things, um, stalls selling, uh, drinks and, and food and stuff like that, that would actually bring some money in, and then we can set that off against the overall cost.
We can't start charging.
No.
That now, but, yeah, stuff like that we can do, absolutely.
Yeah.
Thank you. I, I think also the decisions that we make, uh, from budget point of view, uh, will inevitably be influenced by the survey that's recently been completed and by the future plan, because, uh, there will certainly be, uh, some, some, some clear directions towards not just what we do, but also how we do it, and who else we involve. And, uh, I, I think that's, um, gives us the opportunity to be quite creative in terms of budget setting, I hope.
Thank you, Kim. Um, okay, yeah, so there's, there's a bit of sorting out towards, um, towards the budget and everything, okay? If that's freedom, that one, thanks, yeah. White Ribbon Day, a committee to discuss the suggestion, book objection to a candlelight vigil, vigil outside the town hall during the sixteen days of activism against gender-based violence. Twenty fifth of November to the tenth of December, twenty fifth of November is the usual day, but any day except the twenty seventh of your work. Any thoughts on this?
How do you do it? Sorry, I, I think we should do something, and I think a candlelight vigil is something we could do, not, not expensive, but would show the whole council's support for white ribbon day. And traditionally, quite a lot of people think of white ri- white ribbon day as men supporting domestic violence, um, against domestic violence against women, but actually it is not, it is domestic violence in any shape or form, because it can be, be between men and men, women and women, men on women and women on men.
Done it, it's gone on holiday. No, nothing to do with gentlemen, all right? She's just, she would let a woman do it, and that's it. Yeah, no, I think it's going good. We sold twenty-three handbags in August. I did have an order in August, I bought twenty-three bags in and I sold twenty-three out. So, hope for later, we can go now till Christmas. Thank you very much.
Where are the tickets going to go?
Oh, yeah, they are, they are, Sam, yes.
That's really good.
Yeah, we have a lot of people coming from Newtown. Yeah, coming down from Newtown, parents.
Well done.
That's a brilliant service, that is. The offer. And over the weekend, a lady rang up from Lincoln. And she was in a bit of trouble. She hadn't, um, her mum and dad had died, but she used to come in to the office quite often, you know, we got to know them well. For the years, you know, ended, and then she couldn't get an order of service off. So, we managed to print something off her, not just on a sheet of paper, she just wanted twelve. So, she did that, and then she brought the flowers in, and they're in the T I C, she was ever so grateful.
Oh, that's
She was, yeah. So, we don't just tell, we go out and beyond to help people, even if we don't know, you know, but it's good.
Go with the community, that's
That's it, yes, Sam, yeah.
Well, that's the case at the moment, particularly with the bus time tables, isn't it? I mean, everybody's coming in to ask
Yeah, they're coming from London, K S U's from bus timetables, it's it's good fun, we can have them, you know.
Okay.
Thank you, Ed.
Anybody have any questions? Thank you, Ed. And committee finance month four and five, to know the current spending position against the budget for the committee for July twenty twenty-five, month four, and August twenty twenty-five, month five. We all studied them? I know Morag will love, she loves it, I guess she does.
Yeah, I have studied them.
Yeah.
But just, just one thing to observe is that we're now coming up to the uh, costliest time of year with the events that we put on. Uh, the Christmas events and Halloween, so so I've said this before, even if it says we're under budget now, that may not be depicted by the end of the year. Um, and we have phied out a couple of one of some of the unseen costs that we have may not have budgeted for because we, we didn't know about them, but they are annual costs, so we're trying to pick as many of those out maybe for next year so that we can budget for some of the underlying costs of some of those events that are standard, that happen every time we do it. Uh, which haven't been picked up in this year's budget.
Are they unforeseen costs then, something unforeseen costs?
Well, they're not, they were foreseen costs, but they, they weren't pointed out at the time we set the budget.
Right.
Um, so in future, what we hope to be able to do is to bring all the costs of an event together. Uh, so as we look at it as a whole, right?
It makes it easier for the layman to, to understand it, doesn't it?
Just the additional costs in the, you know, booking acts or anything extraordinary like that.
Thank you, Morag. Bill?
Yeah, are we anticipating any further, uh, costs on Christmas lights? Because I see that we're already over the budgeted amount.
Apart from the yearly having to erect them and take them back down, no, I'm storing, but other than them costs, no. Not that we foresee.
So, what, what, what would that, what would that be additional to what's already there, or is that something that?
So, Chair, can I, I've had a conversation with the town plan. Um, that is one of the instances where the budget was reduced because we didn't need any new lights. But it still doesn't cover the cost of putting them up and taking them down.
And all storing.
All the additional safety checks because health and safety has increased.
Yeah.
On these things, on testing the anchor points and, and making sure all, all our electors are safe for the food for the workforce.
So, so, so what you're saying basically is that, 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 that's an amount that needs to be larger politically.
Yeah, we may be all big budget on their, the lights budget.
Yeah, that's, uh, the, the figure quoted is, is nowhere near, uh, if we don't.
Um, can I just ask you, Morag, if we could, if we could maybe put the budget up slightly for the carnival and the community events? Only because, as we know from last year, very, very kindly from building donated, but these acts are costing a lot. And I think for us to put on a better show, could we look at the budget for next year and maybe up it? Also, well, certainly next year we can look at that as part of I just think we need to the strategic plan. Because, because if you look on these services here, the carnival is actually quite low. And I think we perhaps need to look at that next year. Yeah, we need to better discover, yeah, because acts are
Be towards the end of this year, chairs will get together and set the budget for the preset.
Because I don't think that's enough for And with some of those events, so for example, with the winter festival, we're going to be meeting very shortly. Yeah. To start looking at that and making sure we have got all the costs listed. Because not just the ones we knew about, but the underlying ones that, um And also they're important events, yeah, so they need to be good. The things like the carnival and the Christmas lights, you may well need to buy a money from the special project budget to cover that. Absolutely, um, but that was the one I knew I'd have very quickly because I think it needs to have more money saved. Thank you. Sorry for that.
Then I'll come to you, Bill. Thanks, Bill. Yes, and, and we, we shouldn't forget that if we made some of these events pay, uh, that would help to offset the costs. Um, I think we don't explore enough opportunities to make money at these events, not by charging people for attending the carnival or something like that, but we could have other things, um, stalls selling uh, drinks and, and food and stuff like that, that would actually bring some money in, and then we can set that off against the overall cost.
We can't start charging
No.
that now, but yeah, stuff like that we can do, absolutely.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I, I think also the decisions that we make, uh, from budget point of view, uh, will inevitably be influenced by the survey that's recently been completed and by the budget plan, because, uh, there will certainly be uh, some, some, some clear directions towards not just what we do, but also how we do it and who else we involve. And I, I think that's, um, gives us the opportunity to be quite creative in terms of budget setting, I hope.
Thank you. Um, okay, yeah, so there's, there's a bit of sort now towards, um, towards the budget and everything, okay? If that's reasonable, that one, thanks, Ed. Right, uh, White Ribbon Day, a committee to discuss the suggestion, book objection to every candle effort, which outside the town hall during the sixteen days of activism against gender-based violence. Twenty-fifth of November to the tenth of December, twenty-fifth of November is the usual date, but any day except the twenty-seventh will work. Any thoughts on this?
How do you do it? Sorry, Bill. I, I think we should do something, and I think a candle vigil is something we could do, not, not expensive, but would show the whole council's support for White Ribbon Day. And traditionally, quite a lot of people think of White Ri- White Ribbon Day as men supporting domestic violence, um, against domestic violence against women, but actually it is not, it is domestic violence in any shape or form, because it can be, be between men and men, women and women, men on women and women on men, and it is generally about showing everybody's support for that. So, um, I would support it and would volunteer to be part of it if the council decided that that is what they'd like to do.
Thank you, Morag. Anyone else?
Uh, but, yeah, I, 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 I share Morag's enthusiasm for, uh, participating in this. Um, and we need to find out who else is, is doing things, because in the past we have cooperated with other groups. And, um, uh, we need to do something that is uh, not just honoring the, uh, the event and the cause, but also, uh, making it known and involving other people. Um, I think last year, uh, was, uh, a little bit of a damp squid in the end, it didn't really it, 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 it didn't achieve what it, what was it, it's intended to quite, so we, 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 we need to look at how we can involve people more.
Thank you. Right, so we've got a bit of work to do on that to decide.
Uh, just a quick question, you mentioned last year. Um, I didn't even know it happened last year, where are we advertising and stuff? So, we've got the Facebook page, obviously, for the town council, yeah?
Yes, I think last year it was, it was, it was, it was quite a quiet thing.
Yeah.
Um, it was quite a quiet thing last year.
We, we ended up in Costa.
But it was male councillors who did something, I, I can't remember what it was to be
Well, I said, was, um, Alison was involved, I know, I remember.
Oh, that, yeah.
Yeah. Um, but, um, um, but I think it, it, it was intended to be something that was quite public, and it didn't really work out that way. It was partly weather and things like that, which is always, uh, which is always a consideration at that time of year. But, um, but it's certainly something we should do, definitely.
Do something with anyway. I, I'm not sure about the sixteen days, uh, one after each
None of the days.
No, we do, we do a day.
But I think, I think we do make a suggestion that, uh, that we do at least, at least a couple of days maybe.
Yeah. Do you need to do the date now?
In, in support of it. Does that sound all right?
They can decide on the day.
Can we decide on a day, one or two days now?
It's the actual day that, um, that's, that, that, that's where, where people do something on a day, if you do the twenty-fifth of November. Uh, I don't know what day of the week that is, I'll pounce.
So, you've got calendar?
I have indeed, twenty-fifth of November is Tuesday.
All right.
Yeah.
We're probably better on a Saturday, aren't we, really? Um,
There's the twenty-ninth was a Saturday and twenty-second, so.
What does everyone think? Weekend or, or?
When's, when's the winter festival? Twenty-ninth, so you can't do twenty-ninth, it's the after this, and you know, yeah.
So, so it might, it might actually be worth going for the twenty-fifth, and even though it's Tuesday and sort of midweek. Uh, simply because
That'll break, well.
It means it's not too close to
Yeah.
anything else.
That's the actual date, isn't it, so?
Yeah, okay. All in favour of, uh, uh, sorry, Bill?
Bill.
Uh, Bill.
Sorry, Chair, yes, uh, I was just going to say that, yes, probably the twenty, twenty this would be the date to do it, wouldn't it? And, um, but for the sixteen days, maybe we could put a white ribbon on the town hall or something, that would advertise it.
Yeah.
Um, and Jackson makes a good point, we don't advertise things that, but I don't know whether by that date we will have the first of our new, which we're planning to do. We've got, we've got to get, uh, quotes from, uh, printers, because we want to do it as cheaply as we can. But one of the responses to the survey that we did recently uh, from people was that they don't know about things, and a lot of them supported the idea of having some sort of circular that goes around.
Yeah.
Um, I, anyway, just, just what I'd mentioned.
Thank you.
So, Chair, that, that last meeting in July, we did kind of agree that if we're going to be doing these things, we need a councillor to take the lead with the events manager um, to, to take them forward, so I'm quite happy to volunteer to do that in this case, with Kim.
Okay.
Um, and put some suggestions together to what we can do.
Okay, uh, and, and more particular, what dates would suit most people perhaps, Morag?
I think we choose a date.
Well, I think if we've got a date, um
And obviously this has got to be an evening time, because
Yeah, it'll have to be the, although, nights will be longer.
Yeah.
Nights will be longer, but good luck in the evening. Um, and it doesn't have to be all night, but, um, uh, and we can invite people to, to join us, get some extra candles and invite people to come enjoy
Okay.
if they would.
Okay. Thank you, Morag.
Indeed, I think maybe also just, um, one of the things to do is to find out whether anyone else is already planning something, because
Yeah.
uh, we don't need to reinvent the wheel, we can join with others.
Thank you, Bill. Uh, did you want to go in?
Yeah, I was just going to say that, um, there's a lot of various social media pages that people get a lot of their news from on that. So, maybe if we as councillors sort of stepped in and mentioned on those about those events, it's completely free, doesn't require any printing, and it doesn't reach everyone, unfortunately, there's a lot of people miss, but it does mean there's a lot of people you can cover for just writing a quick report and stuff, so I don't mind if you, uh, want, working with you and sort of suggesting a few places where we could push up the adverts and say, hey, come along, because I think a lot of people would want to take part in those type of events if they knew they were happening, yeah.
Okay, that sounds great, sounds a good idea.
So, I've got, you would like to hold it on Tuesday, twenty-fifth of November, and Morag to liaise with me on the details of the event, so if that's a proposal
And Jackson will help.
Yes.
Can I get that proposed then, please? Thank you, seconded. All in favour? Do the one next to it.
He's gone.
Right. Thank you very much for that, yeah, walking festival update, council bill rules to update the committee.
Yeah, it was always my intention to, uh, produce an update for the October meeting. Um, uh, but I would have done my best to source something out for today. But unfortunately, having spent most of the last month either on holiday or, um, with Covid, uh, I haven't done as much as I wanted. But what I've done so far is I've, there's a number of, um, of local groups, I've, um, made contact with, um, the ramblers. Uh, what were some of the paths that, uh, we need to, um, to assess and waymark, uh, if we were going to have a circular, uh, path around the town, which is something that's uh, is not just for a particular festival, but something that would be an asset. Um, and, um, I, I'm waiting for responses from a number of places, I've, I've contacted a number of places that already have walking festivals to find out what they do, what, these work, what things don't. And, um, uh, so I will produce something that's reasonably detailed for the October meeting.
Thank you, Bill, that's great, that'll be great, okay. Food Festival, to receive that day proposal for the food festival in twenty twenty-six. Anyone like to have a chat?
Yeah.
Who's proposing, was it?
Go, Sal.
Why are we doing that? Why do we have a company that does it anyway?
I'm sorry, Sal?
We have a food fest, we have the continental market, why are we trying to do a food festival as well? Are we trying to add to that, are we trying to combine with that, or what are we trying to do? See where I'm coming from, there's already a continental market comes, everybody loves it, and that's all food and everything.
Yeah.
So, why are we, as a council, trying to put on
I think it was more food trail rather than a food festival, so I just ruined it wrong, food, food trail. Um, it was encouraging, I remember it from last time, it was like, uh, encouraging people to
So, this is Walsall, these are the restaurants, these are the these are the, rather than actually Yeah, so, so more of a, um, advertising piece um, for the, the food menus in Walsall, so that if people come to the T I C, they can give them those, and it shows you know, what, what's recommended.
They've got a leaflet in the T I C, I'll bring you one of the costs, Sam.
Yeah.
Anytime you look to certain
It is possible. Wait. And they have all that, we just gave these things.
Bill, did you want to come?
Uh, yeah, I'm not a member of this committee, Chairman.
No, that's fine.
But I, I would say that I've had numerous complaints from traders in the market hall about the bring and take thing outside, it takes the trade off the lady who's got a food stall down in the market. Uh, and she's complained about it for a couple of years. This would just be, to be, um, kicking them again while they're down. So, you know, they're, they're renting the market stalls off us to run a business on that basis, and we're going into opposition with them.
Uh, I don't know if it'll be opposition, Bill, because wouldn't it be mentioned that we have, uh, food outlets in the market? So, actually, it may just be, uh, some sort of advantage to them, though, with, with advertising. Sally, sorry, Bill?
Um, just to say, could we not go around the businesses and ask for business cards and then put them in the T I C, that's a cheaper way of doing it. Rather than to produce leaflets from the council.
I, I think it would be a case, if, if my memory serves me, the discussion was about costs, because obviously I wanted the cost on the chain, was that the businesses, you included, would sponsor the print, any printing of
Morag, we've got them there, the businesses are struggling too. So, we've got to, we can't keep
Nobody's forcing them to
No, I know, I understand, too. I'm a businesswoman in the town.
Advertising woman.
And it's literally, people are struggling, so you can't expect businesses to sponsor everything left, right and centre. It's, you, you've just got to be bigger, go to the right, okay, bring business cards in and promote it.
That's how the business owners do give out.
That was the whole thing, it was almost If it comes into T I C, where can I go and eat, when it's got the cards there, and say, well, we've got these here.
Wasn't my suggestion, no.
But it's just
Just strange to what it's batting about, yeah.
But it's just, it just makes sense, that you can't spend all this money that we haven't got. So, do things that you can do better, and like, bring your business cards in, ask them to bring them back. It's just their business cards will be there, it's not going to cost us anything, and then you know, we're advertising in that way.
Thank you, Sal. Bill?
Uh, yeah, I mean, I think what was in intended is something that simply advertises, uh, the local eating places. Uh, it's not actually therefore going to compete with the market stalls in any way. Um, because that's, uh, that, that's a totally different thing. Um, um, I, I'm, I have no particular option either way, whether we produce a leaflet, because it could be done fairly cheaply. Um, uh, or whether we, um, uh, simply have somewhere where business cards are available. Um, but, um, I thi- I think that it would be a huge benefit to businesses in the town centre at a time when fast food outlets are springing up outskirts of the town, um, uh, every moment, as you see from the drone photographs of the, of the roundabouts and the things happening there. So, uh, you know, I think, I think th- th- there is an important thing here that is about ensuring that people do come into the town and use the town's facilities and, and, um, use the town, town businesses, rather than just stopping at the roundabout and then zooming off to the coast or wherever.
Thank you, Bill. Bill?
Chairman, can I just ask a preliminary question? Did you have a budget for these things or not?
Budgets are in, in the, uh, in the pack.
Actually, for each item?
Not for each item, no, it won't be, it would be overall, wouldn't it, but, uh
This wouldn't be for twenty twenty-six anyway, when the new budget's set, this isn't for this year, this is something we'd look at in the future.
But how much is it to
If you go a specific budget for it, you can't agree to it.
Well, I don't know, anybody's asking anybody to agree to it, I mean, I think
Julian
What do you mention?
I, I don't think we're here to make a final decision tonight, Bill, are we, we're, we're here to, to debate this a little bit.
We're just, we're just keeping it as an agenda item, I'll, I'll be at the moment.
Jackson, sorry, Jackson. Thing, I like both ideas, and like, if you're getting the businesses to pay towards the leaflet, or if you're getting the business cards. So, surely, the best thing, we need to go around and ask the businesses they want to advertise, so we go to all the local eateries and say, hey, we're thinking about doing this. Would a display of, um, leaflets and cards be best, or would us all printing off one, which you contribute to be best, which one would you prefer? And we can get votes from all the businesses and deliver exactly what they want.
Yes, thanks for that.
All right.
Very good comment, um, Jackson, but before there's more support for that, and I'm not promoting it at all, but before there's more support for that, I would want more support to get the officers to spend their time to go and do that. I think we can have casual conversations with them to see. Um, but we'd need a bit more explanation of what it is, a bit more concept even than we've got now in the sky.
So, we're still going to discuss this, uh, whether, whether we make arrangements, other meetings, Kim? Uh, the, the meeting going on with you and, uh, Morag?
Where did the idea come from, Kim? It was, I thought it was Bill's idea, to be honest, but it, I, I, it was one of you two, and it definitely wasn't Phil, so I swear it was between you two, but it was just a trail as opposed to, it's not doing anything with the continental market, that's fabulous, that stands for itself. But it was just an idea of having it highlighted on a map where the eateries were in town, that was literally all it was supposed to be. But I'm happy to, to leave this one as an ongoing agenda item, we can discuss it every, every month until we've got something solid or not.
All in favour of that? I, I think that needs discussing, certainly, Bill?
I, I, I just want to address the, the point, uh, that, uh, Phil was making, um, uh, before, budget-wise, um, just to make clear that, um, uh, my, um, my, my plans and my thoughts about a walking festival are something that would be cost neutral. Um, that is to say, uh, where we, where we needed to spend money, we would hope to, uh, obtain that money uh, by grants or by millions from the county council, which are available for that sort, for that purpose. So, we need to make clear.
Okay. Everyone all right with that? We really must press on, we've got such a big meeting tonight, uh, it's, there's a, there's a lot to get through. So, Dance Festival, receiving an update proposal regarding that festival we held on in twenty twenty-six.
Yeah, thanks, Chris, uh, yes, like, like Bill, really, with the, with the walking festival. Um, I've made some preliminary inquiries, but a lot of the people I need to speak to um, weren't here in, in August, or I wasn't here, because I was on holiday. So, I asked, uh, I asked the town clerk to, if we could agenda this forward to the next, uh, events committee meeting, um, and that's, that's, that's what I'm proposing, I mean, if this happens at all, um, I actually doubt whether it would happen next year, it's more likely to happen the year after that, so we, we'd be looking two years ahead because it would take that much, uh, planning. Um, and like the walking festival, uh, I would, uh, try to engineer it so it didn't actually cost us, or it didn't cost us much, uh, and make it almost self-supporting. That's the idea, but, uh, by, by the time of the next committee meeting, I think I'll be in a better position to say whether it's a viable, uh, proposition or not.
Thank you, Bill. Okay. Everyone okay with that? Uh, yarn exhibition, receive further information from the organizer of the yarn exhibition. Alan, evening.
Evening.
Is he sleeping over there?
No.
Well done, Alan, do you want to come and grab a microphone?
Maybe just here, Alan, I don't want to flip over.
Right.
How long have you been at it, Bill? Never seen you with any meagre rags. So, Alan, I don't know whether you've got a sort of, um, a speech prepared as such, but from the last meeting, there were a few questions that I couldn't answer. So, we thought it's best to invite you personally, so you can update councillors of any questions they may have regarding the yarn.
Yeah, no, I haven't got a speech, because you said it's
I thought it would be, but just
Yeah.
Okay.
Go on, off the cuff, you're an entertainer, go on. Go on, off the cuff, you're an entertainer, go on.
What is it?
Yeah.
It's a the cu- current one, oh, sorry, the longest yarn one is now in America. It toured the UK and it was, the theme of that was D-Day, and it's all eight eighty-one metre cabinets. And it's a all knitted, like the treats coming off the landing craft going into D-Day. Um.
First ones.
Yeah.
But it's all in cabinet.
It's all, it's all in a glass cabinet. Um, and the new one is now called Britain at War. Um, it was launched at Wonderwall event at Biltwell's.
Yeah.
Um, that's, yeah, that's the longest, yeah, some of the scenes on the on the original one, as I say, that's now in America and it's ends, it'll end up in France. Thank you. Um, I booked it two years ago. Um, and they agreed a date or agreed that next September was the earliest I could get it.
Right.
Um, and it's called Britain at War, so it's got land, a tableau about land girls, it's got V E Day um and different things, so.
So it's going to fit into nineteen thirty?
It'll fit into the nineteen forties. It will raise money for the nineteen forties. Um.
So what are you wanting from us as councillors?
Well, I was, I just want to hire the assembly room for every day for next September.
Cool. It's for the month, wasn't it?
It's for the month.
Oh.
I will admit, I looked at St Mary's, but when I saw it at Peterborough and saw the volume of people in walking frames and things, it's just not going to work there.
Right.
This really is the only venue in town. I could, we could stage it.
Does it need to be the assembly room? Could it not go in for each change? Yeah.
You've got eighty-one metre cabinets.
Right, yeah, big, big, too big, too small.
And you've got to allow for movement of people and stuff.
But it wouldn't mean we would not have to use the assembly rooms for that whole of the area.
But if you're hiring it out on seven days a week, that will more than compensate for the odds, you know.
That's what I think, yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you, Phil.
Yes, thanks, Chris. Uh, yeah, yeah, and we had, we did discuss, it is very impressive, I have to say, but I think we discussed this a while back. We saw months, it rather limits for what we can, what we can do with the town hall for a whole, you know, calendar month out of the year. And if we, if the councils ourselves are going to profit in some way from it, I think maybe I'll take a slightly different view, but um, I mean, we're, 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 are you going to charge entry to this?
We're charging entry because obviously I've got to hire the whole.
Yeah, yeah.
So, so you you are profiting, but it's, you said a hundred pound a day, that's three thousand pounds, isn't it?
Have we got anything on in September next year, is it booked?
No. Apart from the hub, that that's the only thing, is that the hub will obviously take a.
Yeah.
Will will the hub be able to run alongside this, this presentation, or would you want it really just for you?
Well, if people are paying to come in.
Yeah.
You can't have the hub people coming in.
Obviously, it's all changing.
That, eh? Okay.
Thank you, Sal. Bill?
Um, just see, uh, looking, looking at the perspective, it's, um, in the last month, you're the only organization that's used the how the doing is the hub. We've rented that room out every day or every five minutes or whatever, right? Uh, and I can see a lot of benefit in this if it's being rented out, we're getting a rent of it for the whole thirty days of the month.
Yes.
Um, and I, I, I think you should particularly brand new things like this. I think we should have a go at to see whether they're good for the future or, hey, hang on, we lost a bit of money on that, so we don't do it again. Uh, we we'll, but you know, you've got the opportunity, you don't kick it in such whatever you please.
I I think, I think if we're looking at it uh financially wise, we will not guaranteed, will not make three thousand pound or whatever for that, for that month if we don't have this extra budget.
Exactly, yes.
Or we won't make anywhere even close to that much.
And the other thing you've got to remember is Nick has always said he's quite happy to go down to the coin exchange if there's something in.
Yeah.
In the, in the, you know, the centre room.
Yes. Phil?
Yeah, I'm, I'm in, I, 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 I'm very um instinctively in favour of of us doing this because I'm have some anxiety about the sheer length of time as to whether, um, we we're not pizza bar, we're a bit smaller place than pizza bar. Um, can, you know, how confident are you that you can sustain this for that length of time? And how widely are you advertising? I mean, what sort of area will be covering?
The, 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 the tour next year has two places in Wales, Welshpool and Wrexham follows us. Um, so we have basically got all of South, mid and South Wales, tap into North Wales a bit ahead of Wrexham. Um, when I was at Peterborough, um, and I went to see it at Llandobno, I was talking to the people there responsible for it, and they said they've had people come back five or six times. Because you've gone to see it.
Yeah.
And you've gone home and you said, Mum, you want to come and see this exhibition? Well, I'll tell, so you brought your mum or your auntie or your nan, or you have, and men come as well.
So will you also be advertising over over the board and just?
Oh, yes, yes. As soon as I get a green, as soon as I can get a green light from the council, the adverts will start in October. If if it's that early or the month, the month following, you know.
Okay. Yes, no.
Can I, can I just say thank you, Alan? Because I think we'll be very lucky to get it. Oh, because it does look amazing, you know. I'm certainly sure they'll be going.
I mean, if you saw um, the, the new one, one of the main photographs that they're using to advertise it is the tableau of, um,
God, tell me, Alan, not.
B E Day outside Buckingham Palace.
Oh, that one.
Oh, that one, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
It's very clever, isn't it? Yeah, maybe.
Yeah, there's a street one. I mean, the, the, the detail is phenomenal. You can see the land girl or the timber girls on that one. But there's Buckingham Palace. You've got the royals on the balcony, the coat of arms on the, you know. There is one where it's like a party and you can see the ice, knitted ice cubes in the glasses and, yeah, it's, you know. I'm not into knitting, but the detail, yeah.
It's really hard. I understand from the original application you made, that the reason is for a month is the physical extent of how to move these things, so.
Right, is, are we all clear of what's going on anyway? We're all right in our minds what we want to do. Alan, thank you very much for coming and dropping in and telling us more about it. Um, we will be voting on it and as soon as you leave the building, actually.
Right.
Or you can stay if you want.
He could stay if he wants, but.
No, I should be at a nineteen forties committee, meeting at seven o'clock.
So you're late.
Yeah. So thank you for inviting me and uh I hope it goes the right way for.
Thank you, Al.
Okay, cheers, Nick. Oops.
In touch.
Thank you.
Don't take my owl away.
No.
It's a death spectre there, isn't it? Let's face it.
I think he's unplugged it.
I think he might have killed it.
He has killed the owl. Nick's unplugged now.
No, I'm not.
Oh.
No, he's not. No, I can hear that.
He's just trying to make himself look more beautiful, that's all.
Oh, that's not odd, Nick. Yeah, it needs to go in there, that's all.
Nick, Nick knows this.
I can hear him, but. Hang on, Nick, we're just plugging the owl back in.
Yeah. Right. I have had a few connection issues tonight.
I thought you had, yeah.
That's it.
There's an electrician in there.
But from, from, from my point, from my side of things, everything's absolutely fine.
Um, yes.
So Chair, I'd like to propose that we do let the assembly rooms to this venture for the month of September.
Thank you. Second, uh, all in favour then?
We'll have to come up with the price on this, though, guys.
Yeah, it's wrong as well.
Yeah. Well, we're, we're accepting it, but we need to feel that we're savvy on the price of it and make sure that we're all okay.
Yeah, I agree.
I, 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 I generally like I, I, I'm still concerned that I know it's going to make money, uh, but to lose the use of that room for a whole month. It, we don't know how much Alan's going to make out of it and and where that money is going and whether we could actually get a bit more um for the hire.
I think one fifty then.
If, 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 if it, if it's worthwhile enough for us, then yes, we we should do it, but you know, I, I, I think if it's going to make a lot of money and it's going to be there for a month and if it's as popular as he says it's going to be, then it would be nice if we got a bigger slice of the cake.
He's been a profit from it, isn't he? So if he's suggesting a hundred, I think we should do one fifty. But that's just me.
I would, I would sugge- I would suggest a figure of three thousand pounds for the month. Phil?
Yes, I mean, I, 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 I think that is a perfectly satisfactory figure. That's more than we would guess otherwise.
Yeah.
Um, I, I have my doubts, uh, you know, I don't know.
And so do I.
I don't know if this is going to be as successful as it has been in other places. We are, we are quite small. Um, uh, I hope it will be, but I don't think it's guaranteed. Uh, and so, you know, um.
But if Alan's hiring the room, it's not going to cost us anything, is it?
No, it's not, no.
I mean, the, the point I'm making is that I think we're making enough on, uh, you know, a pair of three hundred pounds a day or three, three thousand pounds or something. And um we need to recognize that actually, yeah, Alan might make a huge amount from it, it might be hugely successful, but he is taking a risk.
He is taking a risk, yes.
Maybe we could include in it on this special occasion, a fixed fee, and I agree with the three thousand pounds, and a percentage of the, um, what's, what's it when you've paid everything, uh, uh?
Profits.
Yes.
Profit over and above.
Yeah, it's ten percent of the profit. I don't, did we do that? Would that be legal? Be morally?
I, I really don't know. Uh.
Yeah, yes, yes, we can, we can, we can do that.
Sorry, everyone, can I bring Nick in? He, he's, he's been hanging out at some time. Yes, Nick?
Thank you, Chair. Um, I just wanted to say that to be honest, Alan Crowe is our best customer of the town hall with his bingo and his different things that he does. So I, I try to support him when I can. I think with, without, without all the stuff that Alan Crowe does, we would sometimes struggle for any bookings in the town hall.
Yeah, he, he has booked in a lot, hasn't he? Yeah, Bill?
Yeah, I, 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 I would absolutely endorse that and I, 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 I personally feel that three thousand pounds is a good income for us. I don't think we should be looking for any more.
I think that's.
If this is hugely successful and lots of people come in, it will be a huge benefit to the town. Um, uh, because people spend money in other places, and I think the fact that we are serving the town in that way, uh, should be, should be enough.
Thank you, Bill. Anyone else? I think it, it will get people into the town hall, of course.
Yes, sorry, s- sorry, Chris, I was, I was about to say before, um, uh, before Nick, that, um, I, I quite like Morag's idea. We could, uh, but, but we could, we could actually reduce what we're, uh, charging to hire to two thousand or two and a half thousand and take on a, a small percentage of the gate money. And that way, if it is very successful, then we will make a bit more. I don't want to make a big thing about it. I mean, I would go as a three thousand, but I just think we don't want to lose the opportunity because we could do with the money.
The, the problem with that is we can't make a decision now, can we? We, we don't know if we will be allowed a, a percentage of what's over and above, uh, three thousand pound or whatever, or whatever it is, uh, Phil?
Chairman, I'm sorry, I'm senior, you know, I'm not on this committee, as I say. But at the end of the day, we don't have this sort of conversation about anybody else who wants to book this town.
Are you, are you going to say that?
Absolutely right, right? Nobody wants to say, oh, they're going to make a thousand pound profit on that, can we have five hundred pound profit as well? You know, that's not how we do business. The gentleman here has offered a figure, and the offer on the table is, what do you want to accept or not want to accept?
Yes.
Simple as that. You can't go, you know, in changing things for this customer. And as has already been said by Nick Owens, he's the best customer we've got, we've got for the, for our in the town hall.
Yes.
You can't go and change the rules for him for one thing and then stick to the old rules for the other. It just doesn't gel.
Thank you, Phil. Phil?
That's, that's true, Phil, but this is an unprecedented proposal to hire the town hall for a month. And you, you know, there's nothing wrong with the council entering into any commercial negotiation for any agreement. Um, I, I'm not completely wedded to my idea, I'm just suggesting it as a possibility. But if others want to hire it to him, three thousand pounds, I will agree to it. I'm just making the point that, you know, we could maybe get a little bit more, that was all.
But some of the reasons, if you're totally against it, Mr Barry, I'll tell you that now from this side, but at the end of the day, I don't see that it's any different to any hire of the town hall we have. It's a matter of whether somebody pays the money and how long do they want it for. And, and in this case, we're talking about three thousand, but the main thing I think we ought to remember is we get past the first one, and if we, if it's obvious it's a massive profit or whatever it is, then the negotiations start with the next one, because that Alan Coates already said, he said it himself. This is the only building in town that's big enough to take it. So the future ones have to come here, and that's where you'll be, you're much profit if we come to that.
Okay.
Uh, can I, can I just remind everyone before we go on that, uh, that the press is with us and and they are listening in? Thank you, Sal.
I'm just going to propose that we let it have it for a hundred pounds.
Thank you, Sal. Morag?
So can I make an amendment to that? Because um, we have been talking about the Hall of September, so I, I would amend that to the agreed three thousand pound for the Hall of September.
That's an agreement.
Yeah.
That's what I said, but she just ran it along.
That's an agreement.
And that will give Alan more security and more, yeah, and he can say, yeah.
Can I take one of you as a proposer and one of you as a second there? Okay, and I want to know everyone in favour of, of the three thousand pound for the one month.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much. And Nick was up as well, by the way.
Okay.
Okay, well done for that. Good, good, good stuff.
Okay. Yeah, sorry, Chair, can I interrupt just a second?
I'm sorry, Nick.
Um, I am not supporting, well, I am, I suppose I am supporting uh an individual, but I must say for Mr Crowe that there are many events in Welshfalls such as the coronation and different things that he puts on. And I don't know what he makes out of it, but it is a, is kudos for the town, street parties, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And if he didn't do it, who else would? And I, I do feel that we, we should support this individual wherever we can, as long as it's no cost to us.
Thank you, Nick. Okay, I would like to press on now. We are going to be late tonight. Uh, Borderlands Theatre, discuss Borderlands Theatre using the town hall assembly room uh to host their pantomime production this year. Uh, Sally?
Chair, just coming in on this one, boosting Kim, have we got any information on what they paid for venues already?
Well, we actually had a meeting with, um, the organizer, myself, Phil and Nick, just to get sort of. Well, we actually had a meeting with, um, the organiser, myself, Phil and Nick, just to get sort of a background of what they do. And basically they sell the tickets as opposed to, and then I think it's a, a basically a, um, sort of a fee to the, the venue holder. So I think she's looking for us to stipulate how much we're going to charge her. That was my understanding with her. Correct me if I'm wrong.
Yeah.
Are they a charity? Non-profit group, non-profit.
Um, yes, I mean, they were, they were open to suggestions, uh, and as with, um, Alan's idea. I did suggest to them that rather than, um, hiring them the venue, we could take a, a, a cut on the entrance money. Um, although since then, I, I've.
They're a nonprofit, so you can't really take that off there. It's fair. They're a nonprofit group. And they're trying to make as much money to put these shows on, et cetera. We can't take a cut out of that, surely. So why don't we reduce the hall rate like we do normally for charity and give it them half price and let them, let them do it. See how popular it is.
Um, um, yeah.
It's a nonprofit group.
Do you want me to read what they've suggested anyway and what, what the?
You'll come in in a minute, Morag. Right, go on, Morag.
Oh, thank you. Um, we are in the middle, nearly finished the review of charges for the town hall. We will go to finance committee in, at the end in two weeks' time. And we've got a few, few to finish off. We tried to simplify it so there is commercial or non-commercial. Non-commercial will include not-for-profit charities, et cetera. And there will be a rate. What we haven't and isn't in the report yet is when we want this to commence, whether it's from once it's passed or a time in the future. But we'll have a clear, clear guidance then, um, of the rate we should be charging for the assembly rooms for the time they wanted. So I'd love to have the, um, pantomime at the town hall. I think it'd be brilliant. And we did discuss at one point putting one on ourselves, but um, I was aware that there was a pantomime group going around putting one on locally, even though they'd lost their venue. Though for them to be able to, to do that here, uh, would be great. So can I suggest, we, we agree with them in principle, they can do it. And then we talk to them about the charges. Because it's quite simple. It's a not-for, not-for-profit group, so those will be the charges. Uh, I think the discussions will, will be about the amount of hours they will need it for.
Thank you, Morag. Thank you, Morag.
I'm just asking if we can hear what they have to say, um, before we, before we.
Yeah.
Um, so, one theatre have been let down by their chosen venue and are now looking for a new suitable venue to host their pantomime in twenty twenty-five. They would like to use the use of the assembly room on the following dates. So one evening, week commencing the twenty-fourth of November for rehearsals. So that's one evening that week. One evening, week commencing the first of December for rehearsals. And then one full day on Sunday, the fourteenth of December, for two performances of the pantomime. Ticket sales were twelve pounds per adult and ten pounds for a child. Community groups will have one free ticket on a ratio basis. And she said that over a hundred and fifty people have attended previous shows.
Bill?
I think you should operate below dates. At the current rates that you charge for it, what's the problem?
Yeah.
Are you, are they looking for a rebate or, or something or?
They're looking for nothing, uh, Phil. I believe they're looking to hold it here for nothing.
Can't do that.
Am I right?
Can't do that. Are you love everybody, your organisation?
List what we said. Let's not do that.
Phil, Phil, I don't recall
anything being said in the discussions we had with them, uh, that suggested they wanted it for nothing. I, I, uh, assumed that, um, they would, they would pay, uh, the foregoing rate. We did have some discussions about different, uh, uh, structures for, 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 for charging, whether we do it as like a joint venture with them um, and do some of the advertising and that sort of thing, and then take part of the profits. Or whether they just pay us a flat fee. But I don't think it was ever suggested that they wanted it for free.
Right, thank, uh, I do, I do apologise. I would stand up and apologise to anybody. I got the wrong end of the stack. I thought they wanted to come in and because it was a charitable thing, you know, using for nothing. So, so that's my fault. I do apologise. Phil?
Yeah, I think the, uh, the, the lady who's organising this has previously organised similar events in Ossus Street. Um, and so it would be worth checking whether what's, what sort of basis, uh, that was uh, in terms of the venues they used.
Okay.
But, um, I, 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 my, my impression has always been that they, that, you know, I mean, she would look for a, a, a good and favourable rate, but I think.
These are weird.
To pay some.
Right, all right, Bill. Bill?
Chairman, I, I have to say, yeah, you know, I can't believe what Mr. Mary is saying. If we have agents come in here and say, can I hire the town hall office so and so night or so and so week or whatever. You don't tell them that, oh, we want some of your profits. They're taking the risk and they either make a profit or they don't, but good luck to them. As long as we get our money that we want paid.
Yes, I see that.
And, and, you know, I, I don't go on this, on this profits, uh, splant and this and that. Because all of a sudden, I'll tell you what'll happen. You'll have a situation where an agent will come here and he'll say, I've spent this much getting here and I've spent this much on electric and I've spent this much. And all of a sudden, he's got no profit.
Yeah.
Right? It's, you, you, you do, that's the wrong way. We're here, we're, we're here to create an income stream for the town hall, uh, for the council or the town hall. And there's only one way to do that. It's a, it's our pricing structure as we go.
Thank you, Phil. Can I just bring Nick in, please?
Thank you, Chair. Um, yeah, finance aside, I just think it would be wonderful to see pantomime reintroduced into Welshful.
Yeah, I think it'd be great. I think it'd be great. Judge him?
Brilliant.
Sorry, Nick?
Just a similar thing. I was going to say, I think the pantomime here would be, um, a real positive thing. I know a lot of people who goes to Shrewsbury for pantomime every year. So I was going to say having one here, I think could really, um, generate a lot of rewards.
I'd certainly agree more. And I don't think there's been one for over ten years anyway.
Yeah, this, this is going to involve, uh, young people. It's also involving some people who have been in Buckinghamshire attic. And so, you know, there, there are people with who, who, with experienced stage, stagecraft as well. Uh, it should be a, a really good show, I think.
Thank you. All right, everyone, we need to push on. Bill?
Uh, I was just going to say that the venue, which I think that they lost, which is why they approached us, was Theatre Clara at the High School. But, uh, from a recent meeting that I was at with the trustees. Um, it, it seems that it may still be available to them. So I don't quite know what their intentions are now. Whether they will go with their original venue or whether they will come, come to us. So I, I just mentioned that because it's, it's up in the air at the moment. But my understanding was that the theatre wouldn't be ready for all sorts of reasons.
Thank you, Phil.
I emailed the organiser today and she's responded and said, yeah, she still wants to go ahead to this venue. So as it stands, that's the case today.
Thank you, Kim. Nick?
Uh, yeah, uh, following on from what Phil said, I, I don't know about Theatre Clara, but I think it would be quite substantial reputational kudos for the town council if we hosted it.
Thank you, Nick. Uh, Phil?
Can I just ask you, make sure you tell them, we, you know, it's nothing new to us. We have a pantomime in the town hall every Wednesday.
Morag?
It's just come to me because, because I do think as a council, we should be supporting it. And what can we do that won't cost us any money to support it? And because they're asking for the full day for the, the actual performance itself. And, and I think they should charge for that because they will be getting income from that. But we could allow them to use the, uh, assembly room on two, two days where it's vacant to practise in at no charge. Uh, there's no skin off our nose and would show our support as a council towards them putting that pantomime on in Welshful.
Okay.
Can I just come in there, but you've still got paid staff to come in over the place?
Sally?
It's a small amount. They get paid anyway.
Yeah, but I guess I understand. I've still got to pay staff.
Are we addressing the council now?
Sorry.
Okay.
Sorry, you're more up session.
We need to make a decision, I'm afraid, because that needs to, this is going on and on, Bill?
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm reasonably supportive to what, um, Morag is, is suggesting, but we do need to ensure that we don't forget the fixed costs which do exist. So we, we, uh, so maybe a reduced rate rather than, rather than, rather than three, that's, yeah.
So, sorry, Chris, I know you want to get on, but I just remembered something else. Um, they did say that they, they have, um, lighting engineers, sound engineers, because I said that the, the state of the existing um, facilities in, in the assembly rooms is not good. Um, they seem to think that they might do some work on them to make, make them work better. And actually, that would be an advantage to us if we're not having to pay for that. That would be quite good.
If they're offering to do that, we need them in here. Morag?
Okay, can I propose then, where we just standard rate for the day the pantomime is on? And Kim will calculate that depending on the hours they want it for. Um, and then delegate to Kim to work out a, a rate for the practice that will cover our costs.
I still think we should give them it for nothing for practice it, if they're going to put it on at, at the end of the week or whatever.
Still going to pay staff for, correct?
The children in the town would certainly get a benefit, wouldn't they?
Yeah.
We just imagine the kids.
Reduced wage, Morag said.
In this second.
Right. Bill?
It's a second Morag's proposal.
Okay, thank you. Um, Morag, what was your proposal? Please, a pull up.
We charge, we charge them the rates for the town hall.
Yes.
As a non, non-commercial group, uh, for the day of the pantomime. And we delegate to Kim to work out a nominal cost to cover the staff time in opening and closing.
And so that's December and November and December, you need charging a bit of time for those two nights. At least staff costs are covered, yeah.
Okay, we, we, we can sort that out anyway, can't we? Uh, all those in favour of, of? We're, we're in. Thank you very much. Good discussion. Flicks and the sticks.
Next.
Thank you, Nick. Um, receiving update on flicks and the sticks screening of the M L in September. And to note the next screening will be, and then comes the, the night jazz. Come on, night jazz on sixth of October at seven P M.
I wasn't there. So does anyone else want to take this? I'll be too, Chris.
Bill, Philip?
Of him. Oh.
I want to hear off Philip.
I thought it, uh, it went very, very well. I think we were all surprised by how many people turned up, particularly after a breakup of about three months through the summer period, huh? Uh, but it was one of those things that at, at one minute we got about twenty-four there. And then in the last sort of three or four minutes before it started, everybody came dashing in, didn't they? And it was, it was an excellent turnout, I thought. Um, I, I understand from Kim that we just missed to beat the, the, uh, record for flix and the sticks. So I'm quite disappointed with that. If I'd known that last night, I'd have put a five hundred in the house. Uh, but there you are. It went very, very well. And the main thing is, the people who were there enjoyed it. And were quite happy going from here and that. That's what it's all about, isn't it, you?
I think that's exactly what it's about. Uh, Morag, you want to say some more?
Did count the people. So there were sixty people in the room, not including the projectors. Because we got to see the footage as well. Um, there were two people who left early because it wasn't for them. It was a period romance, I think. I still couldn't work out exactly what it was about at the end of it, but I enjoyed it thoroughly. It was very good. Um, but yeah, they all, I, I think it's a really welcome event in the town. And we, we're going to have to add more seats in the future. So, Bill, you want to comment?
Phil, sorry, Phil.
The, uh, our projectionist is often fairly hard-hearted about the films he has to sit through and watch. He really enjoyed that one himself.
All right, great.
Bill, can I get you finished on by saying the people who were there last night, they, they're a regular clientele coming to this, flix and the sticks. And really, they honestly feel, I believe, that we're doing this for them.
Yes.
And that's for, they, they come all the time and they're looking forward to it, you know?
Means a great deal to them, Phil, no?
And, and they are convinced that we're doing it for them. And it's good that people from Welshful think we're doing it for something for.
Well, Phil, Phil pointed out to me during the halftime break, uh, that, that the ladies would all gather round tables, big tables to gather around. And they were all chatting and, and, and that's the way we'd like that to continue because social, so, social events like that are tended to die away. But, but that one is picking, I think it's picking up things actually, I'm, flicks and the sticks. Bill, sorry, Bill.
I, I just want to make the point that, um, yeah, we've had a lot of the regulars, but we had quite a lot of first timers as well.
Yes, we did. Young, young fam, uh, mum and dad with a young family, I noticed coming in. I thought that was, that was lovely.
So we took, um, with, with the cost of cakes taken off, it was around a hundred and thirty-four. That's, that's, uh, not exactly accurate because I, I banked it and didn't take a note of it, but I know it's a hundred and thirty-something.
But the cakes are more or less paid for also.
They, well, I took the cost of the cakes off. It was, she only charged me ten pounds. She's really good there. So, yeah.
Cake's supposed to be sponsored.
It must be what?
Sponsored.
Sponsored by.
Supposed to have sponsors for the cakes, no?
Oh, I, you know, there is only a donation given, I'm expecting a sponsor.
We don't sponsor every time.
Sorry for the cakes. We take twenty pounds every time.
Okay.
So no, it's not supposed to be sponsored.
So the, the, the cakes are often sponsored, but they don't have to be.
No, thank you.
Nick? Yes, Nick?
Yes, I don't know what's happened to my camera. Um, yeah, I, I, I do have to say that, you know, we're flicks and the sticks, I think is absolutely brilliant. And the meeting of people, et cetera, et cetera. It's what we've been doing at the hub for the last three years, every week.
Thank you, Nick.
Never gets mentioned.
Oh, I think it does get mentioned. I think your hub is very, very popular, Nick. I think it does get mentioned very often. Um, right. I'd like a book sale, uh, to receive an update on the booking. Who's going to give an update on the book?
Unfortunately, uh, Estelle wasn't able to make it tonight, so we're going to postpone this item to next month. Because it's only fair that Estelle gets the update and decides, along with, uh, chosen chat. That's postponed, okay.
Okay, uh, fifteenth is winter festival meeting. To note on the meeting, uh, a meeting to discuss the upcoming winter festival event will take place on Monday, the eighth of September at eleven P M, uh, eleven A M in the Cornet Street.
No, come at eleven o'clock, I.
Up, upcoming events, you can all see the upcoming events and sorry, Bill.
I do.
Make sure I don't raise on seeing you stopping me now.
I just want to, uh, to give my apologies for that meeting because I should be, uh, away from that moment. But I would very, very much like to be involved in whatever.
Well, there'll be plenty more, Bill, don't worry.
Thank you, Bill.
Check whether it's nine A M or eleven A M. Because it seems to have gone from ten to nine.
That's a different meeting. This one's always been eleven.
Oh, right, okay. Long as it's right.
There could be.
My name reminder for that one, please.
For this one?
Yeah, this winter festival.
Or the one tomorrow. This one's, all right, okay.
Upcoming events, you can all see the upcoming events, okay? I don't have to read those to be, I know. Seventeen now, we're going on to planning.
Right, doing that question?
Yeah.
Yeah?
I get stuck, you can come here, all right?
Or so, I'm gonna tell them.
Uh, seventeen point one. Uh, erection of single story side extension. Fourteen close gungguk Welshful, that's right, twenty-one, seven, X G. Appendix G. It's had a appendix.
No, it's basically E. Where are you? Appendix G, is that Kim?
Oh.
Seventeen point one, appendix G.
Well, this is right at the very end of the estate, um, adjacent to Fields. And I can't really see any reason as soon. Well, this is right at the very end of the estate, um, adjacent to Fields, and I can't really see any reason to object to.
Okay, thank you, Bill.
Please, Bill, on that.
Yeah, thank you, Morag. Okay, all in favour then? Can I have me? We'll carry on with the meeting when she's done, decided we can.
Sorry.
Seventeen point two, removal of one and felling of two sycamore trees.
Yeah, that seems a slightly strange thing because I, for, for me, felling means removing. But, um, I presume that they are removing one tree altogether and trimming back two others, is that?
There's no documents online whatsoever, so.
I mean, they're sycamores, so who cares?
Are they gonna, are they gonna take, remove two and then put them back again?
I think, I think they're gonna take one and move, and chop down another two.
About ten, no, carry.
So what are they gonna do with the two that are on the floor when the one's still gone? We, Nick? Right, are you gone?
I mean, uh, I mean, uh, gen- gen- genuinely, um, sycamores are not important trees.
No.
They grow like weeds. Um, uh, it's, it's not a native species, in fact, although they've been in the country for many hundreds of years. Um, and I would, would not imagine there is any particular good reason to oppose with that in mind.
I could find no reason to object to.
Okay, thanks. I, is that, is that, uh?
That's the second one.
Yeah, all in favour? Thank you, Nick. Uh, seventeen point three, section ninety-nine application to vary condition two and eleven of planning permission. Uh, in relation to changes to, to approach plans north, north Melbourne, uh, seven road Welshful.
So what, they're saying to be eight?
Appendix H.
That, this relates to the wall between North Melbourne and the Tesco.
Yes, Tony. Thanks, Wayne. Thank you.
Uh, that, 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 it seems, it's, 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 um, it appears to be strengthening that wall and then, uh, uh, adding, uh, an area of fencing at the top of the wall. Presumably to, um, to, to improve the separation of the two, of the two sides. Um, that, that doesn't seem to be anything that's, uh, controversial.
Okay, thank you. Uh, shall we make, uh, shall we make that okay?
Yeah.
Uh, that's a second there. All in favour?
Who was your preferred one, Bill? Who's your second, though?
Morag. Sorry, Morag, I will search your name out just now. And Nick, thank you, Nick. Do you wanna come in, Nick?
Sorry?
You don't wanna come in, no?
No, 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 sorting.
You're just voting, okay. Cause, uh, seventeen four, construction of external fire escape stairs in existing school building, Welshful High School, Gallas Street Bank, Welshful.
Can I, can I just ask whether seventeen four and seventeen five are exactly the same thing?
Yeah, they are.
I think they are, aren't they?
Are they?
No, they've got the same, they've got the same reference, so.
Yes, they have, yeah.
Suppose you let that happen.
Seventeen five hasn't gone in appendix eleven. Appendix one, sorry. Appendix G, where it's right. It looks like eleven, doesn't it?
Next wave, and propose we accept this chat.
Thank you, Nick.
Can I just say, under the regulatory reform fire safety order two thousand and ten, if it's, if it's identified as part of the fire risk assessment, that they need that fire escape route, I don't really see how we can object.
No, we can't.
Thank you, Nick. I, I don't think we can. Thank you, in favour? Actually, not a lot of skin.
Brilliant.
Uh, construction fire, well, it's done. Uh, erection of, uh, seventeen point six, erection of gallaging workshop, four wind, windmill cottages, Miller's House Windmill Lane, Turlan, Welshful. Anybody know anything about this?
I could show a bit broader.
Really, it's a double.
Could you read that, yeah, sorry?
It's a double garage in a corner of the property. Um, it's, I, 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 I can't visualize how it might impact on the nearby uh, other cottages, but, uh, other than that, I don't see any.
So you've got, so we looked online, Bill, so you've got space for it to go.
Yes, yeah, there is space for it to go, right, so.
Okay. What do we wanna do, Sally?
Let that happen, sir.
Right, second there. All in favour? Morag second there. Thank you all. Nick, thank you, Nick. Seventy-seven, discharge condition six and seven of planning approval uh, in relation to drainage and materials. Former Wednesday store, seventh Road Welshful, that is.
This is the area, um, to the left of the, uh, station car park on that side, which, uh, station car park being our property, I think. Um, but, um, um.
Oh, look what's happened here.
Yes, quite.
Oh.
Um, so this is, this is adjacent to the, um, this is adjacent to Phil's tour hire place, isn't it?
Oh, they have.
Between there and the railway.
Have they been consulted?
I imagine so.
Is it just to improve drainage?
No, they, 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 it's, it's, it's to provide for, um, a, a number of lock-up premises, effectively garages, and I think thirty-nine, is it thirty-nine parking spaces?
Thirty-six.
Thirty-six, yeah.
To serve who, Bill? Would that be the station?
No, no, it's, it's, it's a service to St. Belton, I presume.
It was in Belton.
It's a Dean Hammond, so it's, uh, boys in Belton.
Sorry, Bill.
Okay, no.
Any comments on that?
I see the sign that the railway did, didn't I?
The other side of the railway, yeah, yeah. I'll more information. So this is to the left, it's, it's to the right of the footbridge as you're coming down, it's, um, and, yeah.
But this application, as I understand it, does, doesn't relate to, uh, seeking plan, planning permission to develop it for these lock-up units. It's purely to discharge an existing condition relating to the drainage of surface and water and, and other stuff.
That's right, as I say, yeah, yeah.
Bill, the description says demolition of all, of building and erection of thirty-three lock-up cell storing units, thirty-six of our market. This is our former Wednesday fall, same yard, same.
But that, that, that application presumably has already been, uh, heard and approved. I think this, this is an application just in relation to the removal of a planning.
Yeah, the original application is, is, is dated twenty seventeen, so, so, sometime ago. Um.
Now I've got more info on it before I go on that, sorry. But this is, that's how I read it, was just about the drainage.
Yes, it is, yes, yes. It's discharging the condition.
We may have a line on the day, but I can't see reason to stop the, the food in the drainage and, and.
So, are we in favour of letting this drainage, yeah?
Well, I propose that we are.
Yeah.
I don't see any reason to prevent.
You say no.
I want more information on it. I wanna know exactly what they're doing, because this is not what we, what we asked for.
But they won't have any more um, permission to do anything else other than what they put down on here?
Yeah.
Yeah. It's not giving them permission to do that. Only to.
That's, that, that's all it is.
This and that application, it shouldn't be in this application.
The, the planning condition was imposed, I, I think, back, um, several years ago, as part of an application which this refers to, but, but what we've, what we're being asked to approve is the discharge of two planning conditions that were attached to the original permission. And as far as I can see, it's fairly innocuous. I don't, I, I don't think asking for any more information was, would prevent development, which has already been approved, so.
But we're not asking to, being asked with that, only, I think, the planning issue, the nature.
Oh, no, I, I. I, I think I have a sort of vague question as to why, after quite a long period of time, uh, that, that they wish to discharge this particular, uh, condition. Um, and, uh, you've, uh, whether there is any re, you know, I, 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 I don't know enough about groundwater and drainage to know whether there is any reason to oppose it. But, um.
Yeah.
It's, it isn't, it, it, it isn't a matter of the, you know, the, the, the existing application is as it, as it is.
Yeah.
And I. Yeah, if that drainage problem.
Can I just, uh, can I just say, Morag, before we go any further with the proposal? This, this is an afterthought. It, it almost looks like an afterthought. Uh, they've already got permission to do something of thirty-six car parks or whatever on, on, on the place. Now, he wants to do the drainage and everything else. Bill?
I think you need to bear in mind this application, th- these two parts should have been put in the first application. It should have been all in one, that's obvious.
That's right.
Somebody's missed it and they.
That is right.
They're correcting it. But, uh, without naming names and this and the other, be aware that, uh, this company have taken on quite significant numbers of, uh, increased staff in the last twelve or eighteen months. And they have asked everybody, everybody, uh, to, uh, for looking for parking space while their employees are at their, their job. Because they can't park on the site of their own place, because that's, that's where the public come in and go out. Yeah, you, you appreciate who, who the applicant is, and it's all to do with, uh, having, uh, access to uh, parking space, because bear in mind, as you come down, if you're going over the railway bridge, over, over the bridge, down the other side, on the right-hand side, he owns all that. There used to be, uh, B R S transported one diamond and some other. They own all that. This is just a little bit the other side. And I, I'm guessing, and I am guessing, that these two, uh, comments, uh, refer to the bit on the left-hand side rather than the massive piece that he owns on the right-hand side. So, you know, and tha- that's why they've been missed off the original application, that's what I'm getting, but but it's only, it's only to do with making sure that somebody is providing a lot of employment to this town as parking for his employees when they go to work.
Didn't they try to get our building down there, Bill?
What?
Didn't they try to get our piece of land down there?
Yes.
To park his wagons and everything else?
Yes, yeah.
Well, not necessarily.
I don't think you could make a mention of who it is, but at the end of the day, yes.
I, I didn't make a mention of anybody, did I?
As a company, they've got problems about finding space for their employees to park over there while they work.
Not, not just the company, the thing about.
I think some of them have been parking over the road in a, in a supermarket's car park. And they've been tucked out.
I'm ha- I have to second Morag, absolutely, yeah. Sorry, what was, what was the proposal?
Is to accept the planning, it's purely, my, my reading of this is that previous planning had a condition related to drainage, which meant the certain use of equipment. That probably isn't available now, and they want to replace it by a different drainage method, and that is all they're asking to do.
Or they've already done the work that was required by the planning provision that was imposed in the first place, whatever, whatever the reason. It's either because they complied with the condition or it's no longer appropriate.
Yeah.
So, I, I don't think it's, we, we, whether we agree or not with the original planning permission, this, this application, I don't think it's controversial.
Yes, that's, that's right, yeah.
Okay. All in favour? Against? I'm staying. Thank you very much. Well done. Uh, seventeen point eight, constructional in, internal unit uh, for users' office, kitchenette, toilet, shower for public use.
Actually got an appendix on that.
Christchurch, yeah.
I've seen it, I've got it. At the end, there was a picture of.
Yeah, isn't it?
Hey?
Hey?
L.
L.
No Ls, haven't we?
One was the last one that we discussed.
Oh, right, well, but, yeah, it's a surprise. I've got L. Um, but so I have to say, I, appendix, uh, appendix L will not help you because it will just show you where Christchurch is. And I think we all know, anyway.
Yeah, that's what we just, what were you wanting to do, Bill?
When Carmarthen Edith and family, um, uh, moved into Christchurch and built their home inside the church, uh, they were always anticipating that the church itself would be used as a venue for small concerts and recitals and things like that. Um, uh, they, they want to, um, to, uh, uh, as I see it, uh, to use a vacant space in the church to build a, a little area that could be used by groups using the church for, uh, as a concert venue uh, for, um, uh, washing, showering, or whatever, um, uh. Apparently they had a request for a shower, so they've included a shower in there. Um, but, um, um, but, but basically it's just so that the church can be used for, um, small public music events and things of that sort, without necessarily people having to use the facilities in their own home.
Okay. Are we all in favour of this? Sally?
Personally, accept it.
Okay, second there. All in favour?
I just, no, whoa, whoa.
All right, Nick, go on.
Can I just say, I totally agree what Bill has said. I think Christchurch is a wonderful building for the town. I was actually a choir boy at Christchurch. And my father's funeral was held there in nineteen seventy-four, so any use of Christchurch, I think, is wonderful. So I'm in total support of it.
Thank you, Nick. Thank you, Bill. Okay, that's, that's past your, um, see, uh.
I know, honestly, because I have.
Except Bill, yeah.
Bill.
Bill, rather, Bill, Bill. Planning decisions. Are we there? To note the following planning decision. Approved applications, nineteen point one. Application for number, do you want me to read all these out, or can you all manage that?
Yeah.
We're gonna do it.
I think we can at a push, care?
Sorry? Yeah, thank you, thank you, Nick. Thank you. Okay, interim strategic plan, feedback and proposed actions. You sent a report from town clerk in respect of the interim strategic report consultation.
Only came out with your email. There's no way we're gonna print off nine copies of that.
I haven't seen it, sorry, so.
That was so rude. Right in the middle of it. I was right in the middle of it, man.
We'll just note that one of the, one of the approved planning applications is one of the ones that we've just discussed. Um, has also already been approved, yeah.
Well, you've supported it, so there we are.
We have, anyway, yes.
That was.
Shall I pull again?
No. They know what I'm saying.
Uh, town clerk in respect of interim strategic plan consultation and discuss proposed themes, strategic aims and actions. Are you being cut off, are you prime? Bill?
Yeah, just to say, Chris, that it, it, it's, it's a good report. We had a lot of, um, responses to the consultation. Can't remember the exact figure, but it was over two hundred and two.
Twenty-two.
Two hundred and twenty-two.
responded. Um, and I think a lot of the comments that, uh, came out are gonna be extremely useful. Um, thank you, Bill. Thank you, Ray.
Estelle, uh, Morag?
Can I commend the clerk on, on the draft report and the draft plan? On the bar.
Emily?
That I would have expected to see or not see depending on.
Emily, commendation for the, for the town clerk, all right? You buying my cake tomorrow or something? Anyone else? Anyone else?
Going with that.
This is, don't you say an excellent report.
We need comments on this, but there's lots to cover.
Right, yeah, okay. All right.
Make yourself captain. That's what that pays for.
You know what, that's exactly what I'm gonna do.
We are going to be discussing this further at full council, won't we, so?
It's just important in committee's comments now, because obviously it's gonna be adopted at full councils, if we don't make a comment, yeah. If we're not commenting here now, there's no chance to, apart from full council.
Well, because we've only, this is a long document.
Yeah.
And we've only just had it.
Yeah.
I had one read of it this afternoon.
But we should only be focusing now on the events and planning sections of it, so they're broken down into smaller sections.
I know that.
For this meeting.
To read it all to get to the events and planning bit, and just look at those. And and. I think it'd be very difficult to, to, whatever, with feedback now on the comments.
Well, I mean, if you, you, we all know that the consultation was taking place, are there any comments that stand out that you'd like to raise anyway, to go into it? Anything that you want implemented in it, anything people have told you that you think, yeah, that's good, we'll add that to the the plan. I think that's more that Eric is coming from.
I think.
More money for the events.
More money needs to go into event. That's it, wise comment. So can I just finish off and say that the one thing is about. And I think we need to engage, it's, it's there. Is a whole bit about engaging the people of Welshful. So, so some of the things that we do. The success of those is not necessarily what we put into it as a council. But as to the participation of the people of Welshful that make it successful on off. And and so I do quite like some of the stuff that's in it, particular, and it definitely relates to events. And about the communication side, but there's a lot in it about improvement, communication and marketing. And I think that's essential, because one of the things that came out of it is that people don't know.
Yeah.
They say that we're not very good at telling them, you know, when events are on, what's happening. And I think that's really important. That we address that and get better at doing it, and I'm hoping. Um, because the new town clerk, not new now, is he, the town clerk, it's one of his, his good things, he's, he's quite. He's quite positive about positive communication, that we can improve that going forward. And maybe with the staff review, that might help. Make that happen, but but some of the various things, so. It's been done extremely.
Amen.
Yeah, so I think it's, there's a lot of positive stuff that come out of it, there's part of it negative stuff. Although a lot of the negative stuff doesn't necessarily just relate to the town council. Relates to why the Powys Council functions as well. But. The the actual aims that are in the plan, there's nothing wrong with those aims, there's an awful lot of them. And it's gonna be a big task for us, but I wouldn't disagree with any of the aims that that is set out, so.
Thank you, Morag, uh, Nick? And you, Nick.
Thank you, Chair, um, yeah, I think it's great that we've done this. To give people to have the chance to have their say. I am hugely disappointed that only two hundred and twenty-two residents. Which includes myself, have responded to this. The apathy. Upsets me, to be honest. I wish, I really wish that more people had taken this on board and got involved.
Thank you, Nick, uh, Bill?
Yeah, I mean, I think that, uh, that our town clerk has been reasonably happy with the number of. Of respondents, but it would have been nice to have had more. Uh, in terms of events, um, I think there is a general feeling that our balance is okay. In terms of what we put on, uh, uh, there's always a feeling, there are always the many, many who say. You know, this wasn't good enough, it wasn't big enough or whatever. There is a a strong movement towards what we're already doing, and that is looking to partner with people, looking to bring volunteers in, looking to share the load. Uh, and so that's good, uh, because that's recognised. I was disappointed at some of the negativity about the T I C. And that a substantial majority thought it was not value for money. I do think that that's something we need, I mean, we we need to do more on the publicity front, right across the board anyway. But we certainly need to do more, uh, just to promote the the really good things that the T I C does. Uh, you know, I I booked my holidays and my rail tickets and so forth through them and. But more to the point, when I go in there, people are going in with all sorts of questions. They're finding it a friendly place to go, they're getting a good response. And we need to really be, be bigging that up. Because I think most of the people who came up with negative thoughts. Actually had no real idea of what went on inside that building and of of what of what is offered there. So that there is, there is a real work to be done there, I think, which is ought to be a priority for us.
Thank you, Bill. I was just going to say, I found it very interesting that most people. You know, it was a very small p- group of people who thought it was value for money, but a lot of people thought it should be kept, yeah? So, um, it was strange to me that people were thinking it wasn't value for money, but shouldn't be, so it kind of implies that. There's something else going on, I'm wondering, and maybe it's just the way it was phrased or something, I don't know, because.
Did you see how much it costs?
Yeah.
At the top. I, because we did the staff one last week and sat down, and it was actually the first time I'd sat down and read the report, in all honesty. I was really shocked at how much it's losing us.
Yeah.
That's for me is why I said it isn't value for money for me, I don't use the T I C personally, so that's why I said so. But I was really shocked at how much it's costing.
Yeah. We shouldn't be using the words losing money, because we don't lose money on it, it's what it costs us to provide a service.
Yeah.
And and with Wendy's report today. It's like thousands, over a thousand people a month from out of area.
Yeah.
Are coming into there, rather than a smaller amount, which is still quite a few of local people. But those people that come in, come in and they spend money, and if they get a good service from the T I C, they'll come back. And so, do you know what I mean, so it does generate stuff for the town. So it's, I think the value for money is, is it worth the investment we put into it? To make Welshful a better place, and and that is the question.
Thank you, Morag, Bill? Yeah, we 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 have to remember that there has been an awful lot of negative publicity about the T I C over the last. Couple of years, probably, and and I think that kind of sticks in people's minds. But the the the, the work they do there is, is fantastic, actually, it's a real credit to the town. Even when we had that meeting at Potter's, uh, yesterday, was it? A suggestion was made that they could even, uh, help people who can't. Book their their recycling trip online, they could go into, maybe into the T I C and somebody could help them do that. They do all sorts of things there and they're, they're a real asset to the town and. Yeah, it's it's a shame that that there wasn't. More widespread approval, but it's certainly worth keeping in mind, you know.
Yeah.
Thank you, Bill.
And 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 the T I C is actually our front of house. And that's, that's important, we need to, we need to develop it more from that point of view. And, you know, it was interesting to see the absolute fifty fifty, so whether the danger to be changed.
Yeah.
But, uh, uh, and what would you change it to if you did change it, but.
They were, they were thinking, um, information centre, the post tourist information centre, that's all, just get rid of it.
And I think, I I I think that would be fine, actually.
Yeah.
And, um, you know, people realise that, as people are doing now with the bus services. You know, oh, I don't know what's happening with the new bus, I'm gonna, we'll go into the T I C and they'll. They've got more printed out and ready to hand out, far from the eighty-eight, which no one knows what's happening with.
Thank you, Bill, uh, Nick?
Uh, I was just gonna back up what Bill had just said, I I think the T I C. Is the front face of Welsh town council, the. They offer an excellent service with the train tickets, et cetera, in- information, the staff are really friendly and welcoming. I think it would be a huge shame to to lose such a service because. As as Bill said, they are our front facing. Service to the, to the public. And long may they carry on.
Right, anyone else got anything to say regarding?
Events.
Events, yeah. Um, I think we will, we will just keep going.
Yes, I mean, there there isn't much to add, uh, from the planning point of view, I mean, we have a statutory responsibility to. Re- review planning applications. That then, we we need to, we need to look carefully at the. You know, the reasons why things we say are not received and acted on. So, you know, that might be because we we could rephrase them differently or. Well, maybe we're not always addressing the right issues, but. Nonetheless, I, uh, the one thing that we, we could do with looking at, and we've talked about this before. Is, um, is publicising. Planning applications, um, you know, so that we have a list somewhere of what's. What what current applications are coming before us.
Thank you, Bill, uh.
Bill, Bill reminded me of this, um, the one thing that I do welcome in the strategy, strategy. Is the proposal, we have a place strategy. So that we set some boundaries about what we want to see in Welshful. And the local authority get that, and therefore when planning applications come to us. We can say, well, actually, this doesn't fit within our place strategy for, certainly for within the Welsh town boundaries. Um, and I think that'll be an excellent move.
Thank you, Morag. Look, yeah, I, the the place plan, I think, is is a a real essential that we need to get as quickly as possible. I think it takes quite a long time, it can take up to two years before it's adopted formally and. Powers County Council then have a statutory duty to take notice of in any. Planning application which affects us locally, so the sooner we we get on with it and. Agree what the place plan should be and get it adopted, the better. Um, because there are several big developments planned in the not too distant future. That we will have no real say over at all unless we've got something like a place plan that we can wave in their face. Yeah, so.
And they do have a duty to take.
They do, they do. Okay?
Theme for events, what my, what, is there any points on events after? You agree with what we will intend to do, what we want us to do, so you can say, isn't it? I mean, you, do you have points you want me to write down, put back into?
I think the importance of working with, uh, of the groups, especially on the big events. And, um, I think that's, well, I hope we would want to affirm the principle of. Putting on, uh, events which are free. For for local residents. And I think that's one of the things that I'm, I'm, I'm pleased and proud that we do. And I want us to, to make sure we go on doing it. But to to get, to get, uh, the 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 sort of events that people want, we we need to be looking for. For for colleagues, for for, you know, for others to work with us. That's why I'm very, very happy to hear that the Welsh Parliament of Llanfair are interested in being part of the carnival next year, so that's, that's really good news.
Which, I think, I think in relation to events and watching the strategy, I have a long, no, it's, no, it's about twice. I think we're already doing that, we're already on our way, so we've already been talking about. Changing some of the types of events we put down and trying new things. The the only thing I think that is missing from it. Whether or not it says we're not gonna do it, or we are still gonna look at it, is the skate park, because. There is talking in about more things, more focused things for younger people. And I just think that's the elephant in the room in the strategy. Are we are, are we not, so, you know, whatever it is, then we, you know, we need, we're gonna, we know, we're gonna have to work to go down that road. No, I don't know the thing. But other than that, from an events point of view, you know, we're, we're trying our best, aren't we, you know, we're, we're trying to put on as much as we can with, with. And 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 making the buck go further, really.
Yeah.
Um, and 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 I think that's calculated really within the strategy, so it's, it's quite positive in that respect.
I I was slightly puzzled by the comment that they would like our Christmas things to be more Christmasy.
Yeah, I don't really.
I thought they, I thought we were quite good at that.
We feel we've had a few comments.
More like Christmas.
We've had a few comments, it was too early in the year, which didn't feel Christmasy, so on earth, they're getting at that. One of the things that made me laugh was they won a community hub.
I mean, I hope it wasn't a criticism of Father Christmas.
No, definitely not, he, um.
I'm quite sure he wasn't.
Yeah, works on his figure all year, don't he?
All year, he's getting there now. Bill?
Can I just mention, Chairman, the skate park is on the agenda for next week's meeting. And we'll be coming from there to council, will you pull right hand here, now, come on.
Thank you, Bill. A lot of things that were in the report, I think, we are doing anyway.
Yeah.
We don't go headlong into, uh, creating an event or or we. We, we have committees or special committees that we discuss and debate. Months before we arrive at, at a date for, for, for any of these events or anything that we put on. We, we very often will, will take it round to the town, round to the people of the town and say. Do you think this is a good idea, or or will you, will you add anything to this, or? I I think as a council, honestly, we really get our heads down. The the special committees, the, um, you know. The discussions in here, with with, and then the full council, we, we take it the right way, we, we go about the agenda the right way. There's protocols to follow and we usually do, we almost always do. And I think we're a good council for creating something. And we should be very proud of some of the things that we do already. The firework display has been a huge success for the last five, six years. The, the, the Christmas, but you've got a great Santa, I must admit, the, the Christmas thing is always very, very. Because you can see the people who haven't got money as well as the people who have got money. And they can stand side by side and watch, watch the lights and they can wa- they can come and see Santa. And it will cost them nothing. And I think we'll find somewhere in Newtown or or Lanber or anywhere like that, that you can do the same. Without paying a penny. Then the kid.
Um, I was just gonna say that probably highlights the the fact that, um, publicising is probably one of the biggest downfalls that we have. People are saying we should be doing this or should be doing that, and we already do, then that just highlights that, yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
I was just wondering, going all the way back, we've got, um, the possibility of a pantomime coming here.
Yes.
If we, um, roll that in with a Christmas event this year, maybe we could have people in costume for the pantomime turning up. As part of the Christmas event, and then obviously that drama group is going to be. Using that event and driving the publicity there, so it will have natural synergy as we're giving them publicity, they're giving us. And it could fuel the turning on the Christmas lights, because a lot of places tie in pantomimes with Christmas light die-ins, yeah?
If they've got their costumes down by then.
If they have by then, yes, but indeed, the drama groups are good at getting word out and very good at putting on a show, yeah?
I'm sure Kim will take that on board, certainly.
Very, very good. Nick, I, Nick, come on in, Nick.
I I've spoken to Danny, who. Is, uh, the new N, or M, that, M V B, whatever it's called. is the new M V B, whatever it's called. She took over from the previously, and she was the one who's talking about the the pantomime and how far they are forward. And as much as I think that Jackson's idea would be brilliant if it worked, after talking to Danny, I don't think logistically that that would work. Trying to put it all together, it would just be too much and would not gel together.
Even if they were to promote it at the event, dressed in costume, that would be, then that would be a great idea.
It'd be brilliant, yeah. I'm guessing that Ron Watnick, the costumes might be hard, but still, you could have them there.
A week away though, so they should be ready by then.
Yeah, and there's dress rehearsals they're doing.
I think you don't, you don't need all the costumes. You only need a couple of people who can come, but I think that would be possible, probably.
You can hand out flyers and everything. That's a really good idea. Thank you, Jackson.
What is the pantomime?
Oh, she did tell me. I can let you know.
She did tell me as well, I can't remember.
I can't remember.
But I can't remember either.
Mrs Brown, yes.
Why, Dan? It wasn't Mrs Brown, it wasn't.
Sorry.
We're very clear on that one.
No. I can't remember. I'll let you know. It's definitely going to have that in it.
Why can't she just like bring that tomorrow?
It's not my copy. I'm going to sell Richard on you. Come on. Okay, here goes.
It's on the table. Take time on next meeting. The next meeting of events and planning committee will be held on first of October, twenty twenty-five at six thirty. Thank you ever so much, everyone.
Done, darling. Thanks, Nick.
Thank you, Sal. There'll be a lot coming up for you.